Order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Jared, please take roll call.
Mr. Bukowski.
Here.
Mr. Bada.
Here.
Mr. Embrasia. Mr. Embrasia. Ms. Liagi.
Here.
Mr. Fatolos.
Here.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Here.
Ms. Hallam.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Macy. Mr. Macy? Ms. Zacharati-Chapkus. Ms. Zacharati-Chapkus. Mr. Paul Mary.
There.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Here.
Ms. Pritzio. Mr. Walton. I believe those of you here for Mr. Walton? Thank you. President Katina.
Here.
We have 12 members present at the moment. I believe Mr. Embrasia and Ms. Zacharati-Chapkus have joined us, correct? Okay.
Yes. Here.
Embrasia's here.
All righty.
Councilmember Zacharati-Chapkus, before we have the Chief Executive's Quarterly Address, I believe you wanted to make a statement.
Yes, President Katina, thank you. So what I would like to share is that we are going to have a public safety meeting on Tuesday, the 24th, at 4:30. And this public safety meeting will be focused particularly on understanding some of the requests that we have heard through public comment over the last several months from both the correction officers at the jail to understand what their needs are. And this meeting will be held that day to provide ample time for them to address the issue with council and for council members then to be able to ask questions of anybody in attendance who will be there on behalf of the jail.
Thank you for that. We'll now have the Chief Executive's Quarterly Address. Madam Chief Executive.
Before proceeding, please let the record reflect that Mr. Macy is now present.
Great. Thank you, President Katina, and thank you, council, for inviting me back to give my second quarterly address of 2025. It was so nice to see many of you at the U.S. Open last week. I'm really glad that Oakmont was able to host such a successful event. And I want to welcome County Councilman Jordan Boda to this body. Congratulations. We appreciate you being here and look forward to our work together. So I want to begin my address by wishing everyone a happy Pride Month and also want to congratulate Councilman Boda for being the first openly gay member of council. You are truly breaking the glass ceiling here in Allegheny County, and we appreciate it. And, you know, Pride Month is a lot of fun. There's a lot of community gatherings happening throughout our county that really celebrate our diversity. There was a parade downtown. There was Pride in Millville, in Mount Lebanon, in Forest Hills. You can even go to Pride Night at the Pirates game. And so while all this joy and frivolity is happening, we are also observing unprecedented threats against members of our LGBTQ community, especially our trans neighbors. So it's a scary time, and I want to inform that Allegheny County is committed to being a welcoming place for everyone, including employees at the county and all of our residents. Everyone deserves dignity and respect every day, no matter your gender identity, who you love. We love you, and we stand with you. On a similar note, our immigrant and international student population is also under a great amount of stress right now because they're being targeted by the federal government. Our city of Pittsburgh population finally increased to by 2,900 people between 2023 and 2024. This is the first time we've experienced growth in a long time, and immigration and international students played a key role in maintaining the city and region's population. We've long struggled with decline, and this is a sign that things are actually turning around. So it's important to remember and ground ourselves that immigrants are a vital part of Allegheny County's economy. They contribute as workers, as entrepreneurs, as taxpayers, and consumers. And of course, if anyone commits a crime and hurts another person, there should be consequences. And we have a system in place to do that. But we have quite literally here in Allegheny seen people pulled out of the courts building by ICE officers before a hearing even started, guilt determined, and justice served. We've seen this and ICE officers tearing apart families, targeting children that are orphans, raiding workplaces, and threatening universities to stop accepting international students. These acts, they have nothing to do with protecting us from criminal and actually threaten our region's long-term growth and stability. My administration remains committed to supporting immigrants and recognizing that they are necessary for a dynamic, inclusive, and competitive regional economy. So all of that leads me to a recent executive order that I signed a few weeks ago. Earlier this month, the Trump administration abruptly announced that it was closing a national program called Job Corps, and Pittsburgh is one of the 99 campuses that are across the United States. This was a program designed to help young people out of the cycle of poverty so they can live secure lives on their own. Shutting it down with less than 30 days' notice with nothing else to replace it, putting financially vulnerable young people out on the streets, ending their housing, their tuition, and training programs with no notice, that is cruelty. It is designed to punish people with the least means to protect themselves. And Job Corps is not the first victim of this administration. The past six months have been chaotic. The administration abruptly cuts funding to programs like Job Corps and AmeriCorps. They cut off funding for refugee families who are already living here in Allegheny County and across America. There are constant executive orders and lawsuits challenging the executive orders. The tariffs change daily, and the budget that the Trump administration proposed would cut millions and millions of federal funding right here in Allegheny County across our communities. It has been whiplash basically every day of this administration since this administration took office. And remarkably, as a reminder, we're only six months in. So I stood up a federal disruption response team to formally what was an ad hoc activity every time a new chaotic announcement came down. So this brings together different county departments and outside partners to form a team to mobilize so that we can be nimble and responsive as these events occur, so that we can minimize harm and make sure that none of our neighbors fall through the cracks. On a more positive note, we are grateful for the productive relationship we have with Governor Shapiro and his administration in Harrisburg. Much like the federal government, we, the county, are reliant on state funding for many important programs and services that we could not fund but for those relationships. One of the most urgent funding needs is continued state support for public transit and Pittsburgh regional transit. We have discussed during our budget season last year that every dollar that the county invests into PRT nets $6.60 in operating money and $19.90 in capital improvements. This is money that comes from the Commonwealth. With the expiration date of a state bill that funded public transit for more than a decade and the drawdown of COVID relief funds expiring, PRT is facing a fiscal cliff. We are working with our state delegation and the Shapiro-Davis administration to identify funding options to keep public transit moving. Because it's so important to our regional economy, it connects residents to jobs, education, health care, and essential services, especially those who don't drive, like senior citizens, students, and low-income workers. It supports major employment centers like downtown Pittsburgh, the airport corridor, and Oakland. It reduces congestion and gets more cars off the road. It allows us to attract businesses and a younger workforce. In short, public transit is essential for economic vibrancy, and we encourage a bipartisan solution to fund PRT, a solution that stabilizes the system and sets us up for growth. And June is Budget Month in Harrisburg. I know it well. And we actually have a couple other top priorities that we're talking to the General Assembly about, and that includes more funding for arcane centers and for economic development projects. There are major threats to both of those in this proposed federal budget. And again, those are extremely expensive programs the county cannot fund on its own without strong federal and state investments. So we will continue to work closely with our state partners and work across political parties so Harrisburg can deliver a budget that delivers for Allegheny County. So we've been up to quite a lot from April to where we are now. And, you know, our departments are working hard every day. We want to make sure that we highlight all the incredible work. I do not have enough time at this podium to do that, so we actually gave you all a memo of department updates that you can read at your leisure. And also, we brought back the very popular nondescript QR code. So you can also scan that with your phone, and you can see links to that memo, the press release, and many other things I will reference throughout my updates. So again, feel free to pull out your cell phones and scan the QR code. So I'm going to start with talking about emergency services. So as you may recall, we experienced very devastating windstorm in April and severe localized flooding just a few weeks ago in June. The windstorm in April led to one of the highest call volume days at 911 that Allegheny County Emergency Services has ever experienced. So I want to thank Chief Brown and his team for being so responsive and meeting the moment. Our Department of Public Works provided mutual aid after the storms to many of our local municipalities. And I just want to thank DPW and Emergency Services for your coordinated response and for helping our local leaders. I also want to thank our local municipal leaders and staff, people like Wall Council President Tom Rector, who showed up for their neighbors in both big and small ways when these severe weather events hit. You know, this is really what we're all about, the people of Pittsburgh and Allegheny County. We show up for each other. Finally, I want to thank Team Rubicon. Team Rubicon is a volunteer organization of former military servicemen and women and civilians. They come from all over the country and were on the ground weeks after the April windstorm to help clean up fallen trees and property damage free of charge. It was an honor to meet some Rubicon volunteers and really get an opportunity to know them and to thank them for their generosity. With increasing severe weather and climate change, we need to be recognizing the hard work of our emergency services and first responders and investing in more training and preparation, not less. But for your awareness, the proposed Trump budget would cut $900,000 from our Emergency Services Department, including hazmat preparation, hazmat response, and the Emergency Management Preparedness Grant. I feel strongly now that this is not the time to cut emergency services. Shifting to police and updates there. After more than a year of planning, last week's U.S. Open was so successful, and many of our county departments were involved and partnered with this event, but really, there was a Herculean lift by our Public Safety Department. County Police provided dozens of officers daily for the event, along with our bomb squad, K-9 and SWAT resources that remained on the scene throughout the tournament. We also celebrated the graduation of the first Police Training Academy class of 2025. So we had 35 officers graduate in this class, and it's continued, we continue to see an encouraging trend of increased enrollment in the police academy, which is exciting. And I had the honor of swearing in two new Allegheny County police officers, so welcome both of them to the team. And now I have some positive news about the decline in homicides. While there could be many reasons for this reduction in violence, I wanted to note that homicides are dramatically down this year. From January through the end of May, Allegheny County had 20 homicides. That is the lowest year-to-date number going back to at least 2007. In the last 18 years, 31 homicides in the first five months of the year was the lowest prior number. Last year, we had 42 from January through May. So to only have 20 in the first five months in 2025 is a remarkable and notable decrease. And unfortunately, we know that in summer months, we do tend to see higher numbers, so we'll see if this downward trend continues. But I do want to applaud the difficult and effective violence interruption and prevention work that the DHS has been working on with public safety and community partners throughout this county. Unfortunately, we know the federal government is considering cutting the Department of Justice grants that have helped us coordinate our violence reduction and interruption work. And it would be a shame if some of these programs were to be defunded when we're seeing such positive trends in public safety and reductions in homicides. In addition to DHS and the jail working together on reentry programs, they've also been collaborating on a first-of-its-kind methadone induction program at the ACJ. We're expanding healthcare programs like this to incarcerated individuals so that when they leave the jail, they have the best chance of success to live a healthy life back in the community. DHS has also been working with the jail on mobile competency, which is an innovative program to help people who have been deemed not competent to stand trial and get the mental health treatment they need in the community instead of being held at the ACJ, which is not necessarily the most restorative place. And of course, our warden continues to bring a new level of collaboration with community groups and the jail oversight board. The jail hosted a volunteer banquet back in April to thank our volunteers who helped run our programming at the jail, and the warden launched a highly anticipated dog program with animal friends called Tails. And we are proud to welcome Ethel, a pit bull mix, the first dog to become a temporary ACJ resident. So very exciting times. So switching gears to economic development, we have so many examples of county programs that are successful and are cutting across several departments, including our 500 and 500 initiative, which draws from Economic Development, Department of Human Services, the Housing Authority, and many other partners. So on June 6, our 500 and 500 program reached its one-year milestone. So we've already housed 400 people in 300 units, and we have dozens of more units in this pipeline. We are so incredibly proud of the progress we've made to connect people who are leaving shelter to stable homes. 500 and 500 isn't just about adding units. It's about changing people's lives. So for the one-year anniversary, WSA actually ran a story, the story of Deborah, who is now happily in an apartment in North Braddock with her dog Baxter, only because of the 500 and 500 program. The 500 and 500 website, if you haven't seen it, you can probably find it on the QR code if you scan it, but it has stories of the people that are being impacted by this program. We have stories from 30 people who've received housing through the 500 and 500 program, and these are our neighbors, and it really highlights the success of the program and the lives that it's changing. And we've seen some really positive results. So once in stable housing, 100% of the families that were placed through this program and 98% of the individuals have stayed in housing, and they have not returned to homelessness, which proved our original theory that these people who we were helping, our neighbors who were helping through this program, they weren't struggling with chronic homelessness, addiction, or mental health issues. All those individuals need help and support as well. But these individuals, they were struggling economically, and what they needed was just a little bit of help to get stable and to get back on their feet. And it's a worthy investment on our part. So via our Economic Development Department, we've distributed $2.9 million in home funds, H-O-M-E, funds, to support affordable housing development. This is a program through the federal government. You know, just last year, that money, a lot of it went to the 500 and 500 program to bring those units online. And unfortunately, the Trump budget proposed cutting home spending, which could potentially curtail our ability to make more affordable housing a reality for our neighbors across this county. So 500 and 500, it's not our only housing-focused program that we're currently running. In May, we launched First Home Allegheny, which helps low-to-moderate-income Allegheny County residents cover their closing costs for their first-time home. It was my pleasure to actually go to the first closing when all the paperwork was getting signed. So I want to congratulate Kriana Buckner in Penn Hills on her new home, so we're very excited for her. And we've given the initial approval for 17 more applications, and I'm delighted that this program is going to help more people achieve the American dream right here in Allegheny County. Another vital program that our Economic Development Department administers is the Community Development Block Grants, or CDBG. The proposed Trump administration budget actually proposed ending CDBG entirely. And that's $13.4 million annually that comes to Allegheny County and that goes right out the door to municipal projects like sewer and water line repairs, sidewalk and streetscape improvements, and business development initiatives. Yesterday, we were in Drovosburg, drawing attention to these cuts with Congresswoman Lee and representatives from Senator Piscatano and Representative Ingles' offices, members of the Steel Rivers Cog, and Drovosburg elected leaders. So just to put that in perspective, we've had over 200 applications from municipalities who want to access CDBG money. It is very popular, and we never have enough money to fund it all. And these are projects like sewer line repairs in White Oak. They are senior apartment buildings in Braddock. They are playground upgrades in McKee's Rocks. These are very simple bread-and-butter projects that people expect from their government. And all of those projects and many more are under threat from this federal administration. So despite this uncertainty, I've directed ACED to continue to look for opportunities to invest in our municipalities, to support our housing initiatives, and to actively engage business leaders who are looking to expand or relocate here. We can't grind to a halt because of what's happening federally. To this end, we are launching the first countywide comprehensive plan since 2008. I'm sure you guys have heard of it. Our goal is to create an actionable plan that will lay the foundation of enhancing efficiency and proactively form economic development initiatives across Allegheny County. The process of this plan will take place over the next 18 months. So think about this comp plan as our strategic plan for stability, for growth, and for ensuring shared prosperity for the entire county over the next 10, 15 years. It's our action plan. It's our driving force. It's how we're bringing everyone together to maximize resources. So key focus areas will include establishing expanded transit-oriented development zones to improve accessibility and stimulate future growth and investment, identifying site development opportunities to support industrial and commercial projects, and zoning recommendations and site identification for housing development. The plan will engage municipalities, business leaders, and community members. And our working groups are starting to meet in July, and broad public engagement will begin in August or September. So we've attended a number of events like ALAM, and when we're tabling out in the community, we give folks access to a QR code so that they can sign up for updates on how to engage in the plan. So we're expecting a lot of community engagement and community voice in this process. ACED is also hosting a big summit at the Convention Center tomorrow for small businesses called Doing Business in Allegheny County. So we will have leadership there from the Health Department, from procurement, from ACED, from the Department of Equity Inclusion, and more onsite to help answer questions for small businesses about everything from like food service permitting to how to do business with Allegheny County and how to gain a county contract. So all of you are invited to stop by if you would like, and you can find out more about what it's like to do business with Allegheny County. I'll be there, so, you know, hope to see you there, too. So we're almost done. We're almost done with updates. I wanted to share with you that despite the chaos and the threats to our budget at the federal level, here at the county, we are trying to demonstrate that government, when done well, can deliver smart and tangible solutions for people. It can be a force for good in people's lives. Governing is finding creative ways to solve problems, and the budget is the greatest tool for doing that. Last year was in education and how much the public doesn't know about where their taxpayer dollars go and what the county actually does with them. And we don't want to only have that conversation when it's tax increase time. So we're launching Balancing Act, which is a tool that lets people see a receipt for where their tax dollars are being spent in the county and kind of lets you play around with the budget and see, you know, if you move money from here, you have to decrease money over there. So it really gives people a perspective that you all are in in having to make tough decisions. I'm sure you can find a link to Balancing Act using the QR code. And really, you know, we hope that this is a fun exercise for the public to really understand where money goes and how vital the county services are to our everyday lives. So we are already gathering information on what our 2026 proposed budget will be, and I look forward to presenting that to you in October. And of course, our county manager and Director Cox are available to you anytime that you have budget questions. But we look forward to our engagement, our continued engagement as we get to that point. So I will end by acknowledging a pretty high-profile retirement in the county. Henry was one of our longest-serving police horses. He retired back in May and is now enjoying a life of leisure at Round Hill Park. I gave Henry a proclamation, and dozens of community members showed up to support him. And there were even a few tears that were shed during this retirement party. So, you know, this is a big, you know, was a big event for Henry the police horse and the team who helped care for him during his years of active duty. So you can pay Henry and his retiree buddy, Brando, a visit at Round Hill or visit one of our many county pools, fully staffed with lifeguards, and now open for the summer at South Park, Boyce, Settlers, and North Park. We have the summer concert series going out, so you can go to Hartwood or South Park. I hope to see you there soon. And I mentioned that and end on it because it's important to remember that so much of what we do at the county is to bring our neighbors together. And I think we need that now more than ever. And our parks are an excellent platform for that. So thank you for sticking with me through these updates, and now I'm happy to answer your questions.
Are there any questions this evening? Councilmember Fatolos?
Not necessarily a question, but you talked about the U.S. Open. People don't realize the magnitude of what had happened here in Allegheny County. The event actually was nine days because people started coming in two days before. The USGA, on television, if you watched, showcased the city of Pittsburgh around the world. They showed the Duquesne Incline, the Point, the bridges in Allegheny County. They showed Andrew Carnegie as one of the pioneers of this city. They showcased us, not just the golf course, but the city itself. It was really great. It was probably the largest event in Pennsylvania history, money-wise, because it brought in somewhere in the neighborhood of $40 to $50 million a day. somewhere in the neighborhood of $40 to $50 million a day in this region. And that's a lot of money. Every hotel, 300 homes from here to West Virginia to Ohio, couldn't get a hotel room because they were booked. People came from all over the world to see this tournament, and it was showcased right here in Allegheny County, and they're coming back in eight years. And I've been there since 1973, every time, the six times I've been there, and I have noticed such a difference from 1973 till now. What a difference. When you stand on the hill, you look over the golf course and the hospitality tents, and you realize it's in two communities, Plumborough and Oakmont. It's so big that it really was just amazing to be there and was a pleasure to be a part of that. So I think everybody here should be proud of the fact that we get these events here in our county and an economic driver for what we do.
Yeah.
It is great.
Thank you for acknowledging that, Councilman, and I also want to note that the USGA did donate $1 million to youth programming, our public golf courses, and the municipalities. So $100,000 went to North Park, $100,000 went to South Park to invest in our public golf courses.
If we had the opportunity, if you all watched the presentation of the trophy, they referred to us as Yinzers.
Love it.
At the USGA during the presentation. So he said, "Now I'm in the city of Pittsburgh, and I know what a Yinzer is now."
It's a quality brand.
That was great. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Councilmember Grisbet?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam County Executive, for being here for your update. Really appreciate your focus at the beginning of your presentation on transit and, you know, what you're doing to work with Governor Shapiro. But one of the things I also wanted to highlight was the focus on transit-oriented development and zoning changes. You know, I've heard a lot from constituents and my elected officials in Bethel Park on the desire to preserve the silver line and, you know, not wanting to lose that. But one of the big things that I always talk to them about is, hey, we're not always doing a lot in Bethel Park to really utilize the silver line. We have single-family zoned housing across the entirety of the silver line, and so being able to have your resources to lend to them and help them pursue, I think, better options for land use there will be good to hopefully preserve that in the future and not just through a stopgap measure. Did have one question on CDBG funding. I know, obviously, we're worried about what's going to happen with the Trump administration there, but recently received a letter from Shay Cog concerning the duration that it takes to actually receive the funding and have it allocated from the time that the grants are initially awarded. They said that it was taking roughly two years. Could you lend any insight on that or anything that we're maybe doing to streamline that process a little bit?
Sure. So I've been in office for 18 months, and, you know, we have a new director, Director Lauren Conley, who's doing a tremendous job of thinking strategically about how we align our resources at ACED so we can better serve the public and especially our municipal leaders. So I know that there was some realignment on that process along with a couple other grant programs, so I can have the director provide an update for you on what's going on there.
That'd be fantastic.
But yeah, it's very important that that money gets out into our communities and, you know, goes towards some of the projects that I listed during my remarks.
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Councilmember Hallam?
Hello. Obviously, congrats on all the successes of 500 and 500. I know there were a lot of haters who thought you couldn't do it, but you did it already, and we're only about a year in, and you're almost at your 500 mark. So congratulations to you and your team for that. It's been really cool to watch. My question is about kind of the people who are in their homes, they're renters, they're hanging on by a thread. I'm wondering if you can speak of any plan for like this year, next year, the year beyond for eviction prevention funding and rental assistance funding? I know kind of dried up at the state level, and so I'm wondering if you have any plans to make sure we can keep people in their homes before they ever end up on the streets?
Yeah, I think you touched on a really important intervention that we showed proof of concept that it works during the COVID pandemic, and, you know, we had a lot of resources to dedicate towards figuring out what that system could look like. You know, we have the money that we have, and we have, you know, we're pending cuts from the federal government, so, you know, we are continually leaning on the Homelessness Advisory Board and a number of other community-based advisory boards that help us kind of think through, you know, how we could potentially find funding for initiatives like that. But, you know, at the end of the day, we're looking at an all-the-above approach on how we provide safe, stable, and affordable housing for everyone, and that is a critical component in that mix of getting people to that point or to making sure that families stabilize. So all that to say is I don't have a direct answer for you on what long-term funding looks like, but, you know, constantly looking at opportunities for grant funding, for corporate partnerships in that space to figure out how we can support those neighbors who are struggling with unable to pay their rent or their mortgage.
Awesome. I appreciate that, and I saw that recently there was an RFP issued for a housing needs assessment. Does that tie into what you're talking about now as well?
Yeah, so part of our comprehensive plan is a housing needs assessment. So the city of Pittsburgh has done a housing needs assessment. I believe they've done, they've done a couple, but we've never done one countywide. So what that will do is look holistically at the housing ecosystem that exists outside of the city of Pittsburgh and in the other 129 municipalities. So it'll give us information on like where are people struggling, where are evictions happening, where does more affordable housing need to be built, where does more market-rate housing need to be built, where does there need to be density, where can we do infill with single-family homes? So really kind of gives us an all-of-the-above perspective on the type of housing that needs to be there and the type of housing programs that need to be present throughout the county, and then, you know, really gives us that holistic picture with the data so that we can make informed policy decisions on how we want to spend our limited resources, of course.
Councilmember Coline?
Thank you, Mr. President, and Madam Executive. I see there's some good news in the report in that there have been zero reported cases of measles in the county.
Yes.
But I guess my question is, in terms of the immunization clinics that are run by the Health Department, has there been an increase or uptick in residents who are getting vaccinated? I don't know if you would know that or someone in your administration.
Thank you, Councilmember. I do not have those numbers in front of me, but I do know that the Health Department continues to run those clinics, like you mentioned, and are launching educational opportunities to combat vaccine hesitancy.
Great, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Paul Mary?
Thank you, Mr. President. Madam Executive, we're going to have the women's open here in three years, and I hope
How exciting.
I hope that we have as much enthusiasm and as much success running and being part of that whole scenario in three years. The women play wonderful golf, in case anybody doesn't know that, they play wonderful golf. So looking forward to that. We had a wonderful day up there on Wednesday. It was one of the best days I've been on council ever.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
So hopefully, if there's anything council can do to help that situation in three years, you can count on us.
All right. Brilliant. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Nakareti Chapkus?
Thank you, President Katina. I just wanted to personally thank the county executive and her team, as well as, as she had mentioned earlier in her remarks, also publicly thanking the Department of Emergency Services for their quick action during the flooding. What they were able to accomplish was remarkable, and so very much appreciated for the communities that really, as they described it, were devastated by the flooding. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that once again and say thank you so very, very much.
Anyone else here? Councilmember Bott?
Thank you so much for being here, Madam Executive, and thank you very much for the kind welcome and for mentioning Pride Month. So to go off of councilperson Nakareti Chapkus's comments on emergency services, is there any infrastructure that's going to be put into place in the future now that we've seen such devastating events in the past couple of weeks? Any change in, you know, the infrastructure of emergency services? And then my second question is, I saw that, you know, there is Ethel, but I don't see any updates about the county's first dog, Lucy?
Yes, so Lucy joined the family about a month ago. She came from Humane Animal Rescue League over in the East End, so grateful that they provided me an opportunity to add to my family. So Lucy was here earlier. You can stop by the executive's office if you'd like to see her. She's there most days during business hours. We'll make a schedule for her. So I appreciate you mentioning Lucy, but on a more serious note, I say that this year is a year of planning for the county, so we're doing the strategic plan through the comprehensive plan, which contains a bunch of other subplans and assessments. You know, the other two that we're doing that I've mentioned in the past here is, you know, Chief Brown is currently leading with, in partnership with many of our other departments, is updating our hazard mitigation plan, which will, you know, kind of give us a more holistic picture on how we can more effectively respond to disasters like this, in addition to our climate action plan, because, well, it's not directly related to infrastructure. We know more severe storms have a negative impact on our aging infrastructure and require repairs and investments sooner than we would have anticipated. So those planning exercises will give us a more holistic picture on what we can do to be even more responsive to these weather events and also give us a sense of how we can work with corporations, with our municipal partners, and with community groups on making our communities more resilient in the face of these storms.
Thank you. I think that's it, Madam Chief Executive. Thank you for coming tonight.
Okay.
Thank you for your
Thank you so much, Council President.
We'll now have proclamation slash certificates, 13566-25.
A proclamation congratulating the Allegheny County Department of Public Works for receiving accredited status by the American Public Works Association Accreditation Council, sponsored by Councilmember Macy, all other members of council, and the chief executive.
It shows progress, it shows positive movements in other areas. Could we use more? Absolutely. But we can only do with what we've got, and I think she's doing a great job. So after that, I just wanted to let you know that I dressed business casual tonight. Normally, I would wear a sport coat, but I have another event to go to, and I just wanted to be comfortable. And we don't have a changing room here, so I just decided to, just the way I am. So one thing about Public Works, you can always tell when they're doing their job, because I don't get any phone calls. I've been on the Chairman of Public Works for quite a few years, and working with them is certainly a pleasure. They're a no-nonsense group and women, and I certainly appreciate the communications we have together, the work that gets done, and obviously, you could see how they cooperate with other communities in times of national or local disasters. Whereas Allegheny County Department of Public Works services provided throughout Allegheny County are an integral part of the residents' everyday lives, Public Works is committed to providing the residents of Allegheny County with exceptional infrastructure maintenance, engineering services in a timely, cost-effective, and environmentally responsible manner. And whereas the Allegheny County Department of Public Works is responsible for the administration of all contracts involving the construction, reconstruction, alteration, repair, and improvement of county roads and bridges, an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of Public Works in this function. And whereas the Allegheny County Public Works Department ensures the safety and reliability of the county's vehicle fleet of 814 vehicles and heavy equipment, including 15 hybrid, 15 electric, and six natural gas vehicles, go environment, while being responsible for approximately 408 miles of county roads and 518 bridges and drainage structures. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of the Allegheny County Department of Public Works employees, great people. And whereas the Department of Public Works reassesses its practices every four years to maintain its accredited status with the American Public Works Association, also known as APWA. Whereas during the latest review for accreditation, the APWA, the Department of Public Works responded to 535 practices, of which 292 are applicable to the department. Of those, 99 practices were found to be in full compliance, and 193 were not selected for review. One practice earned the modern practice status in the area of communications. Whereas thanks to the unwavering dedication and determination of the Allegheny County Department of Public Works employees, the department was successfully granted accredited status by the APWA Accreditation Council, making it the department's fifth, that's five times, people, accreditation since 2007, when the department was the first agency in Pennsylvania to receive the honor. Now, therefore, bid resolved that we, Allegheny County Council, and all members of council and county executive, Sarah Anamorato, do hereby congratulate the Allegheny County Department of Public Works for receiving accredited status by the American Public Works Association Accreditation Council. And there you go. Would you like to say? Yes, sure. Come on on.
No. Great. Thank you. What's up? Thank you for giving me a couple of minutes. Thank you, Councilman. President Katina, county executive, council members, thank you so much. My name is Dominic Longobardi. I am the national president of APWA. I want to say thank you so much. I'm so glad that I've got the opportunity to be here. This is a very special place for me, and I'll tell you why in a couple of seconds, but this accreditation is truly a mark of professionalism to the people who actually work each and every day. Thank you so much for being supportive of them. Councilman Macy, I know for years you've been supportive of all of the people who work in the department, so thank you for everything you do. But at the same time, the county executive talked about all the different things that you're going to do. Public Works will be there each and every day, making those things happen. You know, I talk about Public Works being a family, and it truly is, because Public Works takes care of families and improves the quality of life each and every day for the families you all serve and you all represent. I know what it's like to be in your shoes. I am a former mayor, and I will tell you, not always do we get wonderful, good news every time we pick up the phone and we hear things, but I have to tell you, when you need something done, it's the people behind me who make it happen. And I have to, I want to thank Steve Shanley, your director. He's a wonderful guy, gets a lot of things done, and having Steve Cooper's right with him, but there is, and all the people there, I know Bill Crean is here from the city of Pittsburgh. Bill, thank you for all you do. But truthfully, there is one special person, and I want to recognize her, because, again, from my years with the Public Works Association, I've worked with this lady day in and day out. When I first became the regional director here, and I have your current regional director who serves on the board with me, and that's Paul McElhany. Paul, thank you for being here. He just, how long did it take you to get here? Five hours. Okay, so he just drove up to be here as well. As a regional director, you represent this area on the board, and my first work here was in Allegheny County and with the city of Pittsburgh with the Snow Conference, our annual snow conference, right here a couple of years ago. So thank you so much for giving me that opportunity and for letting me be here and letting me be a part of this. Truly, you have wonderful people, but Kathy Trexler But Kathy Trexler, I have to recognize, because again, she's been with me since day one. She's been there to support not only APWA, but everybody who's involved. And as I said, it's a family. We need things done. We need things to happen. Things happen like whether, you just talked about, you know, the storms you had and things like that. That happens all over the country, in North America, and even now internationally for us. And we're all there to help each other out, and that's what it's all about. So again, thank you for the support that you gave to this process, because without it and without this recognition, the things that they do and the efforts that they make don't mean anything unless it's recognized for the things that they do. They have thankless jobs, let's face it. Nobody goes out and thanks anybody in what we do. No one's thanking them for filling the pottle. No one's thanking them for changing the light in the park. No one's thanking them for even cleaning the bathrooms in the park, okay? But they're all important, and that's what they do each and every day. So thank you so much for the support for everything that they've done. So thank you. I appreciate it. And we have a proclamation for you. And I will, I don't know how you guys present this. Usually, we have everybody, when I'm at Town Board where I work, everybody comes down. But I do want to present this to the department and to all of you. So thank you. Give it to Steve.
Would you like to do the picture? We all come up here. All come.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Kathleen.
Listen, you are the best. You know that.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Director. I thought that was this. Are we, oh, we do another picture? Okay.
I'll take a minute.
Where did you grab?
One new one.
I've done it a few times.
All right, guys, ready? All right, ready? One, two, three. Gotcha.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Kathleen.
Thank you. You are the best. You know that.
Thank you for everything.
Steve.
Thank you, Director. I thought that was this.
Oh.
Are we, oh, we do another picture? Okay.
I don't look like you.
Where did you grab?
One new one.
I need a couple.
I've done it a few times.
All right, guys, ready? All right, ready? One, two, three. Okay.
I'm going to tell it now, because I do always thank my Public Works. Because I love them. They keep on my shirt.
Hi. Can I say something?
Every storm, there's no storm.
Do you have a proclamation, Bobby?
I don't want none.
13567-25.
A proclamation recognizing the retirement of Martha Mannix, the Gloria McDermott Hickton Professor of Elder Law at the University of Pittsburgh, sponsored by Councilmember Klein.
All right, let's see what we've got here. Well, this evening, I have the opportunity to present a proclamation or to proclaim Martha Mannix, who is a professor of law at the University of Pittsburgh School of Law. So just by way of introduction, and just so you get to know a bit about who she is and the work that she has done, it's my privilege on behalf of the council to recognize and thank Professor Mannix for her long service, well, to the University of Pittsburgh School of Law and the significant contributions that she has made during her tenure at Pitt to this county and this region in directing clinical education programs that serve, and I would say most notably, low-income elderly clients of the University of Pittsburgh School of Law, Psychob Elder Law Clinic. Many years ago, as I entered my senior year in college, I thought about going to law school. Then I read a column by the New York Times columnist and pundit Russell Baker. And in this particular column, Baker said that he had long nurtured high hopes for a younger generation coming of age and doing something worthy with their lives. But he concluded that his hope would not be realized. He said that if you found yourself on a college campus at that time, and this was the 1970s, and you threw a brick out of one of the many windows on campus, you would more likely than not hit a student who upon graduation was headed to law school. So he gave up hope at that point, and yeah, I did end up going to law school. Now, we all know that lawyers are often on the receiving end of an endless supply of tasteless but usually entertaining jokes. But as many of us know, lawyers do important work, work that matters, work that makes a difference. In the 28 years that Martha Mannix has served as the supervising attorney of Pitt's Elder Law Clinic, she has done work that has had an impact. It has been impactful for the many, many students that she has supervised and educated over all of these years, and for the many older clients that those students have had the opportunity to help. In a conversation that I had just a couple of months ago, and I'm not making this up, with former Pitt Law School Dean and still professor of law David Herring, he told me that much of the work that Professor Mannix did was groundbreaking and served as a model for elder law programs at law schools across the country. As Professor Mannix steps away from what has been an admirable career, she leaves behind a legacy of education and service. And there are so many lives that she has touched, both students and clients, who are for the better for having known and worked with her.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. So come on up. I'm going to read the proclamation, so that will give you a fuller picture. Whereas there are no secrets to success, it is the result of preparation, hard work, and learning from failure. That quote by Colin Powell depicts the true essence of Martha M. Mannix Esquire and her many years dedicated to the University of Pittsburgh. And whereas Martha Mannix is a clinical associate professor of law supervising attorney for the University of Pittsburgh Law School Psychob Elder Law Clinic and the Gloria McDermott Hickton Professor of Elder Law, she has directed the clinic since 1997, and from 2005 to 2016, she has also served as director of the school's clinical education programs. And whereas in her role as the Gloria McDermott Hickton Professor of Elder Law, Martha Mannix taught and supervised second and third-year law students in the Psychob Elder Law Clinic, certified by the Pennsylvania Supreme Court in direct representation of low-income elderly clients. The primary focus of the clinic is guardianship, simple estate planning, advanced planning for incapacity and related issues. And whereas Professor Mannix's interest in elder law results from her three years of empirical research on guardianship reform in Pennsylvania through this foundation-funded research project. Professor Mannix analyzed the implementation of guardianship reform in Allegheny County and was instrumental in developing an orphans court pilot project that utilized a special master in guardianship proceedings. And whereas Professor Mannix also served as the law school's representative to the Elder Justice Consortium, the Elder Law Consortium is a collaboration among the nine Pennsylvania law schools created in 2021 in response to Chief Justice Deborah Todd's interest in promoting and advancing elder justice. She participates in the University of Pittsburgh's Consortium Ethics Program, providing educational presentations on elder law topics to healthcare professionals in the region. She also provides presentations on elder law issues to the University of Pittsburgh Medical School through class discussions with medical students enrolled in the Integrated Medicine Course and a medical residence through the Law and Psychiatry Course. With her clinic students, Martha Mannix frequently provides presentations to older adults on elder law issues. And whereas in addition to her clinical teaching, Professor Mannix is active within the aging services community of Allegheny County, she worked with the Guardianship Committee of the Southwestern Pennsylvania Partnership on Aging to develop a guide for guardians. She is a member of the Elder Law Committee of the Allegheny County Bar Association and the Pennsylvania Bar Association. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, Allegheny County Councilmember Paul Klein, do hereby recognize Professor Martha M. Mannix Esquire for her unwavering dedication and commitment to the elderly in Allegheny County and beyond, and recognize her passion for the University of Pittsburgh and its students. I extend, as I'm sure we all do, our sincerest congratulations and best wishes to Professor Mannix upon her retirement.
Make it really brief. You have a very full agenda. It's been my honor and privilege to work with the older adults in Allegheny County, to mentor law students as they provide legal services to low-income older adults, and to be part of the University of Pittsburgh community engagement effort. So thank you very much for this recognition.
Let me present.
Thank you.
If you want to get some of Jared, we'll take pictures.
Okay.
Is that me?
Okay.
Hope so, Jared first.
Ready? All right, ready? All right, one, two, three.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
The remaining proclamation will be presented back. 13566-25.
A proclamation recognizing the 125th U.S. Open Championship and USGA's continued investment to our region and communities, sponsored by all members of council and the Chief Executive.
13569-25.
A proclamation recognizing Oakmont Country Club's rich legacy in being a model host for those watching the U.S. Open from across the world, sponsored by Councilmember Nakarati Chapkus, Councilmember Fatoulis, and all other members of council.
13570-25.
A proclamation recognizing Bob Ford's accomplishments and distinguished career in the game of golf and declaring June 13, 2025, as Bob Ford Day in Allegheny County, sponsored by Councilmember Fatoulis.
13571-25.
A proclamation proclaiming June 14, 2025, as United States Army Day in Allegheny County and 250 years of its establishment, sponsored by Councilmember Katina and all other members of council.
13572-25.
A proclamation recognizing the 75th anniversary of the Buena Vista Volunteer Fire Company's swimming pool, sponsored by Councilmember Macy.
13573-25.
A proclamation celebrating Charles Marwood upon the momentous occasion of his 95th birthday, sponsored by Councilmember Paul Mary.
13574-25.
A proclamation congratulating Collier Township upon the momentous occasion of its 150th anniversary of establishment as a township, sponsored by Councilmember Katina.
13575-25.
A proclamation commending George Dancheck upon achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, sponsored by Councilmember Grisbeck.
13576-25.
A memorial proclamation honoring the life and memory of Nicole Denise Hogan and declaring June 12, 2025, as Nicole Denise Hogan Day in Allegheny County, sponsored by Councilmember Nakarati Chapkus.
We have no comment on agenda items this evening, so we'll move to approval of minutes. 13582-25.
A motion approved of the minutes of the May 21, 2025 regular meeting of council.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Presentation of appointments. All the appointments being presented this evening are referred to the Committee on Appointment Review. If there are no objections, I'd like the clerks to read them all at this time. Any objections? Hearing none, go ahead.
All of these appointments are to the Juvenile Detention Board of Advisors, all for a term effective through December 31, 2027, and all are sponsored by the Chief Executive. 13561-25 is approving the appointment of Dr. Terry Collin Dillmore based upon the recommendation of Allegheny County Council. 13562-25 is approving the appointment of Kristy Troutman. 13563-25 is approving the appointment of Dr. Kathy Elliott. 13564-25 is approving the appointment of Tiffany Sizemore. And 13565-25 is approving the appointment of Richard Garland.
Moving on to unfinished business. Committee on Economic Development Housing for the second reading. 13547-25.
A resolution providing for a program of temporary exemption from county real property taxes for improvements, including repairs, construction, or reconstruction made on industrial, commercial, or business property in a deteriorated area in the city of Pittsburgh, county of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania pursuant to the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Councilmember Bekowski.
The Committee on Economic Development and Job Creation met on June 5 and affirmatively recommended this to council. I make that motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second? Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jared, would you please take a roll call vote?
On the motion approved, Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bada.
Aye.
Mr. Embrasia.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulis.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
No.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 14, nose one. The bill passes.
Are there any liaison reports this evening? Councilmember Macy?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council, and those in attendance. You've heard me speak about this in the past. It's about the volunteer fire service. It's almost at a crisis situation, where we lack volunteers, we lack the funding, we lack the volunteers on daylight to, because most of these volunteers are out working. And we're having fact-finding meetings. We've had four so far. There's one more in the hopper. And from that point on, we will present some information that I think is very important. I recommend that everybody go out to their council meetings, go to their volunteer fire companies, find out what's going on. You'll be surprised. And as I've said in the past, if your house is on fire, who are you going to call? The fire company. And what if there isn't a fire company? And there's a resolution coming up with regards to some of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Nakarati Chapkus.
President Katina, point of personal privilege, I wanted to, at the beginning of the meeting, I had made mention of a meeting date for, to hear from correctional officers. After learning that that date will not work, I wanted to make note that that date will now be June 25, which is, I believe, next Wednesday. Thank you.
At what time?
At 4:30 PM.
Okay. Thank you. Any other liaison reports? Hearing none, moving on.
I do have one, President Katina. We had a meeting of the Southwestern PA Commission this past month to start off this iteration of their strategic plan. Much of the focus was on, you know, obviously, the things that you would anticipate, our interstate connectivity, public transit was obviously a really big one, given the current budgetary crisis that we're facing right now. Another one that we saw a lot from the rural communities was rural broadband and making sure that we preserve access to that, because that's currently on the chopping block with the current administration. So if you have anything that you really want to make sure that, you know, I advocate for in your particular communities as I go-
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio? Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Eyes 14, no's one, the bill passes.
Are there any liaison reports this evening? Councilmember Macy?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council, and those in attendance. You've heard me speak about this in the past. It's about the volunteer fire service. It's almost at a crisis situation, where we lack volunteers, we lack the funding, we lack the volunteers on daylight to, because most of these volunteers are out working. And we're having fact-finding meetings. We've had four so far, there's one more in the hopper, and from that point on, we will present some information that I think is very important. I recommend that everybody go out to their council meetings, go to their volunteer fire companies, find out what's going on. You'll be surprised. And as I've said in the past, if your house is on fire, who are you going to call? The fire company. And what if there isn't a fire company? And there's a resolution coming up with regards to some of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Nakarati Chapkus?
President Katina, point of personal privilege, I wanted to, at the beginning of the meeting, I had made mention of a meeting date for, to hear from correctional officers. After learning that that date will not work, I wanted to make note that that date will now be June 25, which is, I believe, next Wednesday. Thank you.
At what time?
At 4:30 p.m.
Okay, thank you. Any other liaison reports? Hearing none, moving on.
I do have one, President Katina. We had a meeting of the Southwestern PA Commission this past month to start off this iteration of their strategic plan. Much of the focus was on, you know, obviously the things that you would anticipate, our interstate connectivity, public transit was obviously a really big one, given the current budgetary crisis that we're facing right now. Another one that we saw a lot from the rural communities was rural broadband, and making sure that we preserve access to that, because that's currently on the chopping block with the current administration. So, if you have anything that you really want to make sure that, you know, I advocate for in your particular communities, as I go to those meetings in the coming months and even couple of years, please just reach out and let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on. New business ordinances, resolutions. 135-81-25.
An ordinance of the council of the County of Allegheny ratifying amendments to Section 2105-10 Surface Coating Processes, 2105-18B Dry Cleaning Facilities, Petroleum Solvent Dry Cleaning Facilities, and 2101-20 Definitions, as well as the addition of Section 2105-19A Synthetic Organic Chemical Manufacturing Industry Air Oxidation Distillation Reactor Processes of the Allegheny County Health Department Rules and Regulations Article 21 Air Pollution Control, sponsored by the chief executive.
That will go to the Committee on Health and Human Services. 135-78-25.
A resolution of the council of the County of Allegheny amending Resolution 1115RE, which established an annual countywide cleanup day and encouraged county residents to volunteer to assist in beautifying the county in order to expand the concept, sponsored by councilmembers Paul Mary, Grisbeck, and Philiagi.
That will go to the Committee on Sustainability and Green Initiatives. 135-79-25.
A resolution of the County of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, expressing the intent of council to work in conjunction with the chief executive, county manager, and department of emergency services to provide technical and other assistance to the county's volunteer fire department's efforts to address their staffing and budgetary challenges when such assistance is logistically feasible and subject to applicable budgetary constraints, sponsored by councilmembers Nakarati Chapkus, Macy, Grisbeck, and Philiagi.
I'd like to be added to that one as well.
And President Katina.
May I also be added to that?
Jared, me too, please.
Paul, too. Me as well.
Jack, did you get Jack? I think everybody.
Okay. That's going to the Committee on Public Safety. 135-80-25.
A resolution approving a project for the benefit of Duquesne University of the Holy Spirit, a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation, to be financed by the Allegheny County Higher Education Building Authority by the issuance of the authority's taxable and/or tax-exempt revenue bonds in one or more series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $145 million, provided that the taxing power of the County of Allegheny, Pennsylvania shall not be obligated in any way with respect to the bonds, and declaring the financing of such project is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people in the county, sponsored by the chief executive.
That will go to the Committee on Economic Development and Job Creation. We have no new business. Notification of contracts. 135-77-25.
A communication summarizing approved executive actions for the month of May 2025.
Is there a motion to receive and file? Motion has been made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Well, now, a public comment on general items. Go ahead, Jared.
We have a number. First up is John Kestowitz.
Today, we are presenting to start our agenda initiative to reinstate leg shackles on hospital runs. We believe the loss of leg shackles has shown to be dangerous, at times very dangerous to our residents, our officers, the public, and hospital staff. We need to reinstate the shackles as soon as possible. We've had two incidents this year of an individual running away from our correctional officers without shackles, to be later tackled on the hospital floor in the presence of patients, the public, and hospital staff. We have had an individual attempt and escape who has been convicted of murder, and a resident that attempted to take the loaded revolver from one of our officers on a hospital run, and subsequently kicked one of our officers in the head several times, causing a concussion and bleeding. In front of you is our ordinance, drafted by our attorney outlining our proposal, identifying different protocols for the reinstatement of the leg shackles, which will be followed. The leg shackles' limited use will be only for hospital runs and never for pregnant females. The shift commander will have discretion regarding who will be in shackles based upon flight risk and dangers to others. Some residents will not need to be in leg shackles on hospital runs. You also have our position paper, three pages identifying the recommendations experts in the field are making regarding the need for leg shackles and narratives from frontline staff regarding the need for the shackles. After we receive the green light from our attorney, we will start our petition process. We need 500 signatures, which need to be validated with matching addresses from county elections records and legible signatures. Our plan is to obtain 1,000 to 1,200 signatures. We have over 370 correctional officers, and every officer I've talked to is committed to obtaining as many signatures as possible. We are planning on having experts in the field of security present, frontline officer sergeants, and a former ACJ captain presenting on the day of your vote on the shackles. Also, on the day of your vote, we will present evidence to you regarding how many voters had no idea that they were voting against our initiative regarding leg shackles when they saw the ballot on Election Day concerning the referendum, and that they thought they were signing to abolish solitary confinement, not the leg shackles initiative on the petition statement. Included in your packet today is a one-page outline of the argument we will be presenting along with the 2022 petition statement. We also will be providing a position paper with narratives from officers and spouses regarding how the loss shackles contribute significantly to our officers' stress levels, feelings of vulnerability to lose their job, their livelihood, and how the loss contributes to the decline in their physical and mental health. Thank you.
Thank you.
Edward Wren.
Okay, I'm still Ed Wren from the Swisselm Park neighborhood of Pittsburgh. My T-shirt, and it's a little small, says "Save the Planet." I would like to help to save the people of this planet and our county from the scourge of Donald Trump, and from our society not doing enough to decrease pollution and climate change and thereby save lives. I applaud Councilmember Nakarati Chapkus and Women for Healthy Environment for providing free assistance for low-income people with home air filters and other protections against air pollution. I second Councilmember Grisbeck's comments about the silver T-line, and thank you for being a volunteer firefighter. I'm taking another three or four hours of my time today, because I know that one person can be a tipping point by having the conviction or naivete to validate what others may fear to say. Wouldn't we all like to be that young child who pointed out the obvious, the emperor has no clothes? In a public hearing on June 9, 1950, Joseph McCarthy accused a staff member of Attorney Joseph Welch of being a communist. I think I've heard people being accused of communists recently. Mr. Welch responded, "Until this moment, I think I never really gauged your cruelty and recklessness. You have done enough. Let's not assassinate this lad further. Senator, have you no sense of decency?" Overnight, the story goes, his immense national popularity evaporated. Let us all have the courage to say what others may be afraid to, trusting that we will be on the right side of history. As I've mentioned before, punting on the resolution to increase permit fees on polluting facilities at no taxpayer expense is playing into Donald Trump's self-serving assaults on our environment. Please be more swayed by the numerous people speaking in favor of this than the private lobbying from powerful interests. Thanks again for your time.
Thank you.
Yvonne Brown.
Not here?
Oh, where is she?
There she is.
Yes, made it. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's up in the Hill District, the top of Bedford, that's Kay Lee where Irving's tires. I came down today because what has happened to me in this room has made me not want to come in, almost afraid to come in here. I told your sergeant of arms, the tall one, I said, "Will I come back and explain the different things that he has said to me? And if he looked like he's going to run," and this is Walton, "if he's going to run and charge me," I said, "Take him down." I want you to understand that my reputation means a lot to me, because I am an advocate for children, youth, families, hospital workers, and even homeless. I left a cup. I have a silver cup that I had. As I'm, I've had a stroke. So, when I go to city council and speak, when I come back, I walk home. I drink Gatorades, the doctor said, for my electrolytes, and I walk home, because in the building where I live, we have a domestic terrorist that has beaten up a mother and daughter with a hammer. She just beat a man with a stick. She took the manager and had her by her neck, and she's threatening me. She said, "Ms. Brown need to mind her own business." But I'm telling you, I worked at Western Psych, and I was taught, if you can get away, you won half of the battle. So, I'm still making sure that I can walk as much as I can. But I want you to understand, my reputation means a lot. As I'm walking home, there's a little fella, but he's begging. He runs across and he's saying, "Mr. Yvonne, Mr. Yvonne." Well, I have a large family, and I thought, I said, "Well, hey, baby, how did I know you?" He says, "You give me money sometime." He said, "Mr. Yvonne, there's a, on the south side, there's an Asian policeman that attacked all the homeless people that was in this little doorway." He said, "They took my computer, took the lab, took the thing." But anyway, this cup, when I was walking down south side, on 18th Street, I had crossed over, and then I looked in there. I have a thing for pennies. It depends on what's around, and I'll pick them up. So, there was like a row of pennies, and I followed the pennies, and came to a vacant storefront, and in there was the cup and all these pennies and dimes, and that was the homeless person I know. So, when I go to the city council, the chief of police come, and I told him about the Asian police that's beating up the homeless people. Okay, so then I seen him, and the next day he came back, and when they give proclamation, some of them chiefs come, even though they just come to stand around. But he said, "He checked into it, and he's going to look into it."
Thank you.
I'm not finished, but I'll be back next week, because you just need to know what's happening.
Okay, two weeks.
Thank you so much.
Next.
Brian Engler.
We lost Jacob, but gained her.
Good evening, council. My name is Brian Engler. I live in Shaler. I am currently the president of the union at the Allegheny County Jail. I'm here tonight to talk a little bit more about the agenda initiative. These are the leg shackles we're talking about. Every arresting authority in the state of Pennsylvania can use these, except for us. Every county jail in the state of Pennsylvania, and there's 62 of them, can use these, except for us. Every day, we have people in jail that have these put on by sheriffs and by constables in our facility, and they're taken to court, municipal court, city court, state court, federal court, every single day. Every single day, people sit with these on while they're in the bullpen. When the sheriffs come or leave us on the hospital details, the very first thing they do is put these on. And they don't put these on for any other reason than to prevent an escape attempt. You'll see in the coming weeks, I've analyzed all the extraordinary occurrence reports provided by every county jail for the last 10 years. The last year we were allowed to use shackles, we only had to report the use of these in the facility. We used them four times. That represented one-half of 1% of our overall use of force among all county jails. That means out of all the 62 county jails, it represented one-half of 1%, and our own facility, it represented 9%. As John mentioned, we had two incidents with officers tackling an individual without shackles on as they tried to escape in the presence of the general public. From my perspective, I just want you to imagine how our officers feel when they hear about these incidents, knowing that they're next up for a hospital run, and that this could happen to them, that they could be disarmed by the person they're supervising. Incidents like these lower our morale and our ability to retain new officers. I had a senior officer tell me yesterday, "Please let council know, I quit doing hospital runs after 15 years, when this referendum was passed, because I don't feel safe. I don't want to have to use my firearm on an escape attempt. I don't want to have to use my baton on an escape attempt. I don't want to take the risk." Now that a lot of these senior officers don't want to do hospital runs, we have newer officers doing them who've never done them before. They're the ones that are working 60, 80-hour weeks. They're the ones that are exhausted and tired, and they're the ones out there in the public. It's risk-reward thinking. We've had 140 bench warrants right now for escapes from alternative housing in the last year. Risk-reward thinking tells you that if they can't stop you from leaving, then just leave. When we don't have these on somebody that's a flight risk, there's nothing stopping them from using the risk-reward thinking, saying, "I'm going to make a run for it. I have nothing to lose." The ensuing manhunt would be a drain on public resources. I mean, you would have blocks shut down around the hospitals, schools, businesses, everything else. We're just asking to use these for the safety of the officers, the medical staff, and the inmates involved. At our next meeting, I will be presenting all 13 hospital escape attempts to you, so you can see this is a very real thing. Thank you.
Next.
Next up is Justin Morazek.
Next.
Jeffrey Anderson.
Next.
Sergio Caro Del Castillo.
Next.
Michael Arnold.
Next. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hello, my name's Mike Arnold, and I'm a member of the union at the Allegheny County Jail. I've been there for just about like two and a half years at this point. I've been a part of many hospital runs, hospital details there. I have personally had two escape attempts, all at the hospital. The one in particular that I was told to come here to talk about a little bit was the one where he attempted to go for my partner's firearm. This individual actually slipped his handcuff by peeling skin off of his hand to grab my partner's firearm. This individual has an extremely high pain tolerance, and that is well-known, that this guy does not feel pain. Whenever he went for my partner's firearm, there's actually, on his specific holster, it is a two-stage safety, which this inmate actually was able to grab the firearm and turn the first stage of the safety off, leaving one stage left to remove that handgun from the holster. At that time, my partner did everything that he was supposed to do, to clench down on his hand, twist and turn away. I attempted to secure the inmate and took several blows to the head and face from him kicking. I would love to tell you how many kicks, but I don't remember. I was diagnosed with a concussion from that. But I had to use my baton to get him to stop kicking me. After a couple strikes with the baton, typically, they're usually done after that, I went to attempt to resecure the handcuff, and I was met with more blows in the face. So, after a decent amount of time, he was eventually re-handcuffed and everything. Where this whole thing was going with the shackles and everything, that didn't have to be as violent as it was. Had he had shackles on, it would have been much easier to simply put a foot or a knee on the shackle chain, and then it's over at that point. That's all that needed to happen. Without them in place, we did what we had to do, though. At the end of the run, once it was all settled and done, there was a decent amount of blood I had to wash off of my hands, and going to the sink after washing my hands and washing my face, I realized I'm washing my blood off of my face. But with the shackles in place, that did not have to happen, that did not have to go down the way that it went down. But that's all I really wanted to cover and talk about. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sean Nally.
Next.
Daniel Schonbeck.
Next.
Heather Pope. She's here.
Good evening, council. I'm Heather Pope. I appeared here two weeks ago before council, and if you recall, I called for Ms. Hallam's resignation and/or an apology after she reposted hateful rhetoric on her social media page. An apology was never issued, even after the Jewish Federation condemned the post, and the Tribune Review wrote a story about it. Public officials have an obligation to
everything. Where this whole thing was going with the shackles and everything, that didn't have to be as violent as it was. Had he had shackles on, it would have been much easier to simply put a foot or a knee on the shackle chain, and then it's over at that point. That's all that needed to happen. Without them in place, we did what we had to do, though. At the end of the run, once it was all settled and done, there was a decent amount of blood I had to wash off of my hands. And going to the sink after washing my hands and washing my face, I realized I'm washing my blood off of my face. But with the shackles in place, that did not have to happen. That did not have to go down the way that it went down. But that's all I really wanted to cover and talk about. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sean Nally.
Next.
Daniel Schonbeck.
Next.
Heather Pope.
She's here.
Good evening, council. I'm Heather Pope. I appeared here two weeks ago before council. And if you recall, I called for Ms. Hallam's resignation and/or an apology after she reposted hateful rhetoric on her social media page. An apology was never issued, even after the Jewish Federation condemned the post, and the Tribune Review wrote a story about it. Public officials have an obligation to acknowledge and apologize for their actions when they're wrong, even if for nothing else is a matter of human decency. Since that meeting, I have spoken to other county residents regarding this matter. As a result, I have found that this issue is more widespread, particularly amongst the Jewish community. I'd like to share something personal with you. I'm not Jewish. I'm Catholic. I have biracial children, and I'm former law enforcement. I have felt the pain of hatred on many levels. It knows no bounds, and it certainly does not have a place in county council. It's disgraceful and shameful that this continues in our communities. I implore you to take a deeper look into the hatred that is being felt by our fellow Jewish residents. I spoke with many who express fear for themselves and their families. In this county and across our country, hate is being preached towards members of the Jewish community, and worse, violence has occurred. I ask this council to research this matter and meet with county official, I'm sorry, community members to hear their concerns. Hatred is occurring against people who aren't Jewish as well, as we know, people of color, the LGBTQ plus community, and many others are feeling it. I'm more than happy to assist in any way that I can to prevent more violence from spreading via ordinance or overall awareness. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Eric Gomkowski.
Not here.
Kevin Smith.
Not here.
Joseph Weiss.
Not here.
Joseph Agulia.
He's here.
Good evening, council members. At the last meeting, I spoke about my friend who was a victim of the attack in Boulder. Her name's Carrie Spira. She was a former Pittsburgh resident and Allegheny County resident. What has happened to her in regard to some of the things that she sees out there, it's the hateful rhetoric. I join with the others that have spoken here tonight about the need to condemn any rhetoric that is hateful and discriminatory towards Jewish people, whether the source of the hate be from an elected official or even your next-door neighbor. It's time we police anti-Semitic rhetoric. Anti-Semitic rhetoric is a gateway to violence. When such rhetoric becomes fashionable, as it sometimes has in our community, it dehumanizes a group of people and allows any such rhetoric to be accompanied by violence. This month stresses equality. Juneteenth, Pride Month, they stress equality. I want Allegheny County to be open and inclusive to everyone. But it seems as if since some of the rhetoric against Jewish people becomes fashionable, it even pervades some of our society. Why would an educational group here in Pittsburgh send out a mass email quoting the former leader of Hamas, Sinwar, the self-proclaimed butcher of Gaza and the mastermind behind the barbaric October 7th, 2023 massacre in Israel? Why do elected officials refuse to condemn Hamas, Hezbollah, ISIS, and any and other organization and say exactly what they are, terrorist organizations who commit wholesale murder? Elected officials in our community as a whole need to take a strong stance against anti-Semitism and terror as a whole. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Actually, last up is Christopher Fromm.
Good evening. My name's Christopher Fromme. I was born and raised in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. And I believe that the people that, geez, how do I say this? I'm a long-life Allegheny County resident. So many people should reject terrorism as it stands right now. Elected officials in our community as a whole take a stand against terror and anti-Semitism. And I believe that this is an issue that should be on all people's minds. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion has been made and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.